I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
That mic's hot, by the way.
Thank you. You good? You ready? Okay. All right, good morning. Am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
It's just so loud in here. Good morning. I'll call the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boojak. Vice Chair Burrow.
Here.
Commissioners DeBoer. Faber. Halsted. Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman. LeGrand. Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Here.
Commissioners Merchant. Morales. Morse. Oliver King. Pakla.
Here.
Ponstein. Sparks. Steck. Teal. Womack. Chair Green.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the invocation. I have the distinct pleasure of giving the invocation this morning. As we get started before the invocation itself, many of you probably heard that Dave Maney of East Grand Rapids passed away peacefully last Friday at the age of eighty-six. Dave was a pillar of the EGR community, a football coach, an entrepreneur, and a business leader, and a generous philanthropist, and a tireless advocate for our community, and he will be sorely missed. So I'd like to ask that you join me in a moment of silence in honor of the life and legacy of Dave Maney. Thank you. You can please join me in prayer, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, as we gather this morning in the season of Advent, a time of hopeful waiting and preparation, we ask you to renew in us the virtues this season invites: patience, humility, and a spirit of readiness to do your will. Grant us wisdom in our discussions, fairness in our decisions, and charity toward all whom we serve. May the light we await at Christmas guide our work today, helping us to seek the common good and uphold the dignity of every person in our community. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. I'm going to stay up here, and I'm going to ask Administrator Vandenberg to join us for Agenda Item Number Five. A Special Order of Business Employee Recognition for Quality Service. And I'll turn it over to Al.
Good morning. This is one of our favorite things to do, to recognize some of the outstanding work that our-- and it's just a sample of the outstanding work that our Kent County employees do each and every day on behalf of our residents, businesses, and visitors. We'll start with our external service recognition. One of Kent County's core values is to provide high-quality service to internal and external customers. We are here to recognize Jonathan Ritter. Jonathan, why don't you come on up? From the Kent County Central Services Division, who was selected as one of the Quality Service Awardees for the third quarter of 2025. Jonathan was nominated for his exceptional service. The individuals who nominated Jonathan for providing high-quality service wrote, "When the refugee and immigrant community called for more education on how to better interact with law enforcement, we suddenly needed a lot of materials in multiple languages, and we needed it fast. We didn't have the graphics ready, and normally we'd have to outsource that work. But Mr. Ritter stepped up and handled both the design and the printing in record time. Since then, he's been our go-to person whenever we need anything related to graphics or printing. He always comes through, and we're incredibly grateful for his talent, flexibility, and support." Please join us in congratulating Jonathan Ritter for his notable contributions to the customers of Kent County.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Can you get a photo? Have a quote? Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Next, we have our first doubleheader. So if I could have Laura McDowell and Laura Erickson from IT, please step forward. We're here to recognize Laura McDowell and Laura Erickson from Information Technology Department, who were selected as two of the Quality Service Awardees for the third quarter. Both Lauras were nominated for their exceptional service. The individuals who nominated Laura McDowell and Laura Erickson wrote, "Both Lauras worked on a project to build and transfer over two thousand records from two separate databases that the county could no longer support to a new database product with increased capability. This resulted in a major upgrade for the Retirement Services Team and HR. Besides having dedicated fields for all of our needs, several of which did not previously exist, we have gained automation of healthcare deductions, year-end reporting, and vendor-specific requirements that will bring efficiency to major annual projects. Both Lauras were so focused on our needs in delivering a product that would meet the needs currently, as well as ensuring that the door is open for additions and tweaks as our needs evolve. They were both so responsive, efficient, and driven throughout the project, we are truly appreciative of how the end product turned out. Their knowledge and professionalism in customer service is top-notch!" exclamation point. And the project was completed nearly two months ahead of schedule. Because of Laura McDowell and Laura Erickson, the Retirement Services Team and HR will, in turn, more efficiently serve the retirees, active and former employees of the county. We are so grateful for their hard dedication and service. Please join us in congratulating Laura McDowell and Laura Erickson for their notable contributions to the internal customers of Kent County.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, I don't know if you're McDowell. You are.
There we go.
Okay. Thanks so much. Really ought to think about some transition music or something for these moments. It's really quiet here. All right, we will continue on Agenda Item Number Five, our Special Order of Business. And we have the Prosecutor's Office Annual Report. I'd like to welcome up Chris Becker, Kent County Prosecuting Attorney. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. Transition music? I'd like some walk-up music, then.
That'd be sweet. Next time, you know, you let us know. All right.
Michigan State fight song.
There you go.
There we go. Yeah. Appreciate the opportunity to do this. This is kind of a little bit odd, because, you know, I'm talking about my annual performance review, but a lot of the stuff is, I'm talking about 2024, since I'm the last one to come around. So just keep that in mind when I am talking about this stuff. I'm trying to break it down kind of by our divisions that I'm going with. I'm going to start off with juvenile crime. Juvenile crime is something that seems to pop up every, you know, couple of years in terms of what's going on. I have a picture here of a Mr. Johnson. It was a brutal assault in the city of Grand Rapids. He suffered some serious and probably life-changing injuries in the assault during the course of this. He was assaulted, and then individuals broke into his house, stole his car. And I bring this case up because there's always this clamor. I always get this clamor, I want to get this juvenile crime. We got to charge them as adults. This is a horrible crime. We need to charge them as adults. And the thing about juvenile, the juvenile system, is it's the same as the adult system, but it's different. Okay? It's the same that we need to be able to prove a case beyond a reasonable doubt. We have to have the same evidence. We have to have the same ability to prove a case that we do with the adult system, but that doesn't translate into that we can just charge them as adults. And that's the issue with this case, is because we've got a number of individuals that can show that were stealing his car, but we still can't get back to what occurred during the assault. And that seems to be the clamor. The outrage is that, you know, we're not holding these juveniles accountable, and we're doing everything we can. And I think the juvenile system is at a really unique place right now. And when I go into that a little bit, because it gives you some idea of what's going on here, we can charge juveniles as adults in two ways. One is a traditional waiver. A traditional waiver is you have your average case, a stolen car, maybe a home invasion. Home invasion, that's a very scary thing, somebody breaking into a house, okay? I can't automatically, I can't charge those as adults if it's just one offense. A traditional waiver is a juvenile who's been in the system multiple times. They've gone through probation, they've gone through placement, they've gone through special programming, and they've done all those things that we've done, and we've kind of exhausted our ability to do anything with them in the juvenile system. And then I, as a prosecutor, when it's traditional, I can say, hey, I think we've done all we can for this juvenile in the juvenile system. We need to transition them into the adult system. And I have to seek judicial approval to do that. And so you see there in terms of some numbers here, you know, you go back to 2014, there was very few, very few that were done, and quite frankly, almost 2019, and then we've switched. And we've petitioned the court for juvenile waivers, and we've gotten those juvenile waivers. I think just about every time, as you can see, that we've gotten approval from the judge saying, yes, we should move these kids into the adult system. So I think it shows that we're being mindful. It's not just us saying we need to move them to the adult system. It's the judge is also agreeing with us. We've exhausted everything we can for this juvenile, so we're trying everything we can, but it's time to move them to the adult system. The automatic waivers that you see there, the automatic waivers are for the very, very serious cases. Very, very serious is murder, carjacking, rape. Those are, you know, basically your capital offenses. I, as a prosecutor, then can say, hey, I can move this individual to the adult system. The crime is so bad. And you can see, those are fairly consistent. So, you know, in terms of, you know, I hear a lot, well, you're not doing anything to hold them accountable. We're doing more than we have in the past in terms of, you know, moving kids that, you know, we've exhausted, or charging the kids as adults when the charges are that serious that we have to do it. And so it's one of those things that the public doesn't realize that, and I'm hoping you, as, you know, your commissioners or representatives, can explain that to them, that, you know, it's a different system. The whole idea of a juvenile system is rehabilitative, and I fully support that. I would love nothing more than have a juvenile go through the system and be rehabilitated. And I think the vast majority of them do get rehabilitated, and I don't see them in the adult system. That's the ultimate goal. But, you know, the clamor is that we need to treat them all as adults, and that's just not the case under Michigan law. It's not my case, it's under Michigan law. We simply cannot do that, is just charge everybody for every bad act and throw them in the adult system. And as you see, this gives you an idea of the petitions that go through the court. We've seen a substantial rise in juvenile petitions over the years. It's coming down now. You see that the green one was 2022, which were kind of coming, the effects of COVID. The 2024 stats are blue, and so we've come down, but we're still substantially higher than in the early 2000s, 2020, before COVID. So we're seeing a lot more petitions, we're seeing a lot more juveniles in the system, and we're trying to deal with that. And given this, it's not just a Kent County issue. I hope you're all aware that the state has done the Juvenile Justice Task Reform. They came out in 2022, where they're talking about, the governor came out with this proposal saying, hey, we need to do in the juvenile justice system. But going to my, you know, point in terms of we can't charge them as adults and put them in the adult system and lock them up, if you will, the whole purpose of the juvenile system coming out of that task is says detention is not a normal routine for all options of community-based placement is the priority. That's what we have to look towards, and that's what I've been trying to tell people when we get out there. The message is, we need to deal with our kids in Kent County, in our community, okay? The detention centers only got ninety-eight beds, okay? We can't lock up all the juveniles that you saw, the petitions, you know, were up to twelve hundred petitions. With ninety-eight beds, the math doesn't work. So we need to find a way to deal with these juveniles appropriately in our community and how we can do that. And it's not just juvenile detention. I bring this up because we have Judge Ackert, it's one of the quotes here. We're losing juvenile facilities across the state. They're shutting down. We don't have any place to send them in the state, and a lot of out-of-state placements, we talked to the circuit court, it's five hundred dollars a day for one individual to go to an out-of-state placement generally. So that's budgetary. It comes out of the circuit court's budget. They're not real enthused about trying to send kids out of state either. So once again, we have to do stuff in the community. I'd like to think we're proactive on that. At least our office has been trying to do that. We've been ahead of the curve, if you will, and starting in the upper left. We do have a J Task, a juvenile mental health treatment court. Okay, J Task? You know, in all these treatment courts, it's not, they're not the silver bullet, because right now there's about thirteen to twenty that they can take into the juvenile treatment court. It's a very narrow, and that's for any treatment court, you know, sobriety courts, drug courts, mental health courts, the resources it takes, you just can't put that many kids. But we have done that. We've had a juvenile treatment court going on in Kent County here for like three or four years, and I think that's one of the things we're doing. You see the other court, the picture there with Pastor Gaddy, the Grace Program I started at Pilgrims Rest Baptist Church. That's one of the things that we're looking at. I'm trying to divert some of these kids that are looking, heading towards the adult system, and getting them intensive treatment in their community with Pastor Gaddy. And one of the things he's really doing, and one of the things we're looking at, is also treating the families, because there's very often, it's not just the kid, you can treat the kid, but you got to treat the family as well, because there's other things going on in that family that you can do all your work you want with the kid, but you put him back in a house where the family dynamics are terrible and they have all kinds of issues that we can really help out with the family, and Pastor Gaddy is really trying to expand his program to work with the family members. We've done restorative justice, you see the 2024 overview, the restorative justice. We've done that with our juvenile system. That's for the lower level. So we've got Pastor Gaddy trying to go to the higher level, the kids are going towards the adult system. These are trying to, you know, intervene with restorative justice to have the victims and the defendants meet in the lower level, the low, you know, stupid juvenile crimes that we all think of, and trying to maybe, you know, catch their attention that way to say, hey, look, meet with this victim and see if you're having an impact on them to try and change the behavior a little bit more. One of the things that we're really working on, Commissioner McGrann's on it with me, and I think Jenny James is as well, the K-Connect. We're really taking a look at the system, and we've mapped out essentially the system from kids, you know, there's no such thing as a no-risk kid, we kind of said. There's low risk, all the way to the kids who are involved in the adult system. And where can we help those kids out on the entire spectrum? We've developed the spectrum, trying to even come up with numbers of that. So we're being proactive in terms of, given what's going on in the state, given the fact we can't lock them all up, we have to deal with these kids in Kent County. These are our kids. We have to do something with them and really provide the programming, and I think we're trying to do that on a regular basis. Part of the juvenile thing in that, you know, it's not just juvenile delinquency we deal with, it's also neglect. We have a contract with DHHS to deal with the neglect system, and you see here in terms of, we have a rising neglect petitions, and we have, one of the key things is, we have kids that are referred to the delinquency, they've committed crimes, but then they're deemed incompetent. And it's a little, quite frankly, it's a little bit easier maybe to deem juveniles incompetent, but then what do you do with them? They're incompetent, we can't deal with them, we can't get them into probation, we can't, you know, we can't do anything with them criminally, so what do you do with them in the community? While we're having, we're actually seeing cases on the other side, the teens adoptive trauma, we have adopted parents that have issues with these kids, that they're saying, we can't handle them anymore. They're actually trying to turn them over. They're turning them over and saying, I don't want to deal with this kid anymore. We're just, you know, they're too much to handle because they've had all kinds of trauma. So it's really, there's no place to put these kids. There's a lot of these kids that are dropped off, you know, much like the mental health cases, dropped off at the emergency room, dropped off at DeVos Children's Hospital, and said, that hands out, we're out of here. So this is a really big issue that we're seeing a number of neglect petitions that, you know, we're, we don't know what to do with these kids. That's a simple matter, and there's not a whole lot of resources out there. So to, you know, help these individuals or families who have these kids that they just simply don't know what to do with. The other thing is, you know, when we do remove kids, and that's part of what we do in neglect petition, we may have to remove kids, and, you know, parental termination is possible. It's once again, it's the last resort, if you will. So we're really getting, we're doing a better job trying to intervene early. We're working with Families First, we're working with CPS, to try and get services into the home before the kids are removed, because it's tremendously traumatic for kids and families to remove kids right off the bat. And so we're having a lot more success in terms of prevention, beginning them in there, but then the cases that are being, you know, going to termination are much more complex, much more difficult to deal with. And you can see, some of the issues are, just like you're dealing with every day, lack of housing, there's parenting skills is one of the things, and substance abuse. I mean, that's across the board on the things that you're often dealing with here, but we're seeing on the front lines in dealing with these kids out in the community. One of the things we tried is a pilot project for early rapid reunification. Usually it takes about eighteen months. We've started a project, we've got only three families go through it, but it's trying to cut that down to six months with, once again, intensive programming, okay? Like, you know, we've done it before where we're getting the resources when the family's intact. Sometimes families need maybe that shock, holy cow, I'm going to lose my kids. The kids have been taken away. Then you get some more services, try and get the services into the thing, and they respond and trying to get those kids back sooner, once again, to get those families together, to reduce the trauma that is on those kids if they're removed, but we got to protect those kids, too. If the parents aren't doing what they're supposed to do, sorry, we're not going to give them back, because, you know, we have a duty to protect those kids. It's not just, well, we're going to keep the families, keep them together for whatever reason. We want to make sure the kids are safe. And so this rapid reunification court is something that we're really hoping will grow a little bit in terms of just, you know, three pilot cases that I've gone through so far. On the other side, kind of standing with the theme of the kids, we do have our Child Support Division, our family side. If you look at it, I joke with Michelle Smith-Low, who's the head over there, I'm like, you've got nowhere to go but down. If you look at our guidelines, the federal guidelines, this is a federal program, we get the funding, we work with the Office of Child Support, but the criteria is you want to hit seventy-five percent for all these criteria. Well, we're at ninety, we're at ninety, what is it, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent? We got nowhere to go but down, so next year, I hope I don't get criticized if, what the heck? Our numbers have gone down, because we're hitting about everything we can in terms of service of process, locating the non-custodial parent, getting establishment orders, working with friend of the court to make sure those orders are enforced. So I think they're really doing a nice job that way, but I'm also trying to, you know, emphasize they're really doing a nice job in the outreach. There's a picture there, they've gone with other community organizations to say, hey, here's how you get child support. Here's what we're trying to do for child support, to get their message out and going out into the community and events to really establish what we're doing, because I think a lot of people don't realize, the Prosecutor's Office does handle child support cases, and I think that division is doing an outstanding job. cases. And I think that division is doing an outstanding job. Moving towards the adult, you know, the prosecutor's office, the criminal thing, that's whatever he thinks. And what do we have here? Well, it's going back to the juveniles. Okay? They can't get away from them. So even in the adult system, the juvenile issue is coming up quite a bit. You have here of a picture of, this is an individual who was just arrested about a month ago up in northern Kent County. He led the police night chase, ended up breaking into a retirement community and a lady's home as well within the retirement community. He was released from 1996 because that's one of our People versus Stovall. We had one juvenile, this Michigan Supreme Court has come down with orders saying, you know, in that case specifically, a term of years for second degree murder was unconstitutional as defined. So we had to release him. But we're dealing with the juvenile cases. We've had people still in Parks, which is 18-year-old, because they moved to 18-year-olds. And now we're right in the middle of dealing with People versus Taylor, 19 and 20-year-olds. We have to resentence all these people. Okay, these are individuals who have committed first degree murder for the most part, except in one case, a second degree murder. We are resentencing those individuals because of the Michigan Supreme Court decisions. And that, it's a huge strain on our office because it's, you think, well, it's just resentencing. Well, there's experts. We have to go dig back into Michigan Department of Corrections files. We have to dig back into files of, we have to look back at what was their history back in the juvenile detention. I've got one case right now from 1969. A 1969 case that I'm trying to find records on, which don't exist. I'm actually had an intern go look at microfiche. They sell microfiche around here to try and dig up. You know, it's a brutal homicide in the city of Walker. It was a case, a double homicide at a gas station back in 1969. But we don't have anything else. But that's part of what I have to do in terms of the criteria if I want to uphold a life without parole sentence. I have to, you know, do my due diligence. I owe that to the victims of the representatives of the victims that, you know, talk about trauma. When you think your loved one's been murdered and now here we are 30, 40, 50 years later, surprise, we're in a re-sentence and they could get out. And having those conversations with victim reps has been very troubling. And it's a huge amount of effort on our office to go through these cases and make, A, make the determination. And then if I do make the determination to go for a life without parole, to have those hearings in front of the circuit court. And this is all on top of, our normal docket is not going to be in any lore. This gives you an idea. I hope you all read. I'm sure you read cover to cover my annual report that I delivered, or hopefully you got delivered a few months ago. But this gives you some sort of numbers. You know, we average about, you know, we got up to 8,000 total warrants last year. This is, you know, obviously a rise. We're, you know, usually around seven, as low as six times sometimes, but 8,000 warrants is kind of a new high. We're also denying, and that takes time. You think about, you know, deny, that's easy. That takes time and effort to go over, read a case and make sure that we're not charging people who should not be charged. And so that's one of the things we do. But we're seeing a higher caseload as we go through this. I know a lot of you have asked me, we've talked about getting additional prosecutors. I remember, hopefully you all seen Sesame Street, you know, Big Bird's imaginary friend, Mr. Snuffleupagus. I feel like that's state funding. You know, they keep on hearing, we're gonna get it. And we told they're gonna get it. So I've had a meeting with Alan. We're hoping to be, have enough money to hire some new attorneys when this imaginary money that we're supposedly getting here, which will tremendously help in the district court level, because that's where I think we need the most help. Some, you know, don't ask me why, but this just gives you an idea of some of the increases. I've always said, you know, the one thing that prosecutor's offices see every single day are drunk drivings and domestic violence. And you see those are going up. I wish I knew why. There's, you know, we're doing, I think, a really outstanding job with our domestic violence court. Once again, thank you for your funding. The ARPA funding is tremendously helpful. But once again, it's a treatment court. We're only taking about 20 individuals for various domestic violence cases. And you see, there's, you know, there's a tremendous amount more. But that's something we gotta deal with every day. And part of that is, okay, are we doing, is there more domestic violence? Or maybe they're feeling better because they're seeing all the stuff we're doing on domestic violence, saying, hey, I'm more willing to report and stand up and call the police. So it's always a double-edged sword. When you see a rise, is that something bad or is it something good? Because people are feeling more comfortable. Child abuse, that's, that's the real interesting one, because that's, that's a substantial increase. Like I said, I wish I knew why, but child abuse cases, and we've had some very serious ones. We just had a homicide that we charged with the mom who killed her, her child. Those are very troubling and difficult for our offices to deal with. Have to talk about the major cases. Obviously, I don't want to stand up here and, you know, dodge the sure case that we did. But I want to bring up, you know, how you feel about what the charge, what happened in that case. I think you should be proud as county of how it was handled. I'd like to thank Lori Latham, she was back here early. I couldn't, the press, how she handled the press, helping with the press. We had, you know, New York Times, LA Times, we had CNN, we had all kinds of things and having a press room over the courthouse to be able to deal with that. Lori was invaluable in helping with that. The court itself, Andy Thalheimer and Sandra Vanderhide, in terms of we had a three-day jury selection with 300 questionnaires that went out to individuals. That's a tremendous burden on the courts and still having other trials go on at the same time. It didn't shut down the courthouse. It was a tremendous burden on them. The sheriff's department, the security that was around there, the sheriff's department, you know, I have to thank Sheriff Michelle and how she handled that. I think we, you know, however you feel about how, what the outcome was, I think when you look at how we were perceived in the national media, I think it was handled about as well as it could in terms of professionally. And, you know, it was, you know, that's, that's how it went. But that's the thing we always get, you know, I know the clerk always, you know, we're all of a sudden, you know, we're a clerk that we're a battleground county, and you get all kinds of calls. Well, you know, next thing you know, we had, we had a homicide involving an individual who was here, not, not a legal person to hear in the, and we're in the presidential. You know, we have commercials and Trump, you know, making comments on that. So I just bring this up because these are big cases that all of a sudden show, you know, we're in the national spotlight, which also creates resources. We need more resources for stuff like that sometimes because we have such large cases that just pop up that we don't know of. You never know what's gonna catch the national attention. Going to our appeals division, I always talk about them because they've seen, once again, a huge increase in cases. You know, the numbers speak for themselves. One of the biggest things are the set-asides. Once again, the change in the law by the Michigan's legislature. We're dealing with a huge amount of set-asides, people lying and nothing that, nothing wrong with that, but that just increases their caseload. And you see from 520/20 to over 1,100 in 2025, that's one of the areas I want to hire a new attorney because that's a tremendous burden on only four APA staff. And to give you an idea, Genesee County has four. We have about, what's it, a little bit over 200 there in terms of between court appeals and Supreme Court filings. They're about 186, and their four appeal staff don't handle the district court, circuit court pleadings, briefs and stuff. So we have four people doing 1,000 cases. They have four people doing, you know, a little bit under 200 cases. And for some reason, we get picked every time the Supreme Court, this is Kim Mans, one of my APAs, to argue a case in public. She went to Luddington to argue a case in public just a few months ago. They always, this is like the third year in the role of Supreme Courts picked us to do that. And so, you know, it's, puts a little more pressure on her because you got media and stuff like that. But I think it just shows, I think, the quality of attorneys that we do have. I think there's a reason they pick us, because we have good appellate attorneys who do an excellent job. I always try and emphasize our outreach. This is just from this past fall, some of the trunk or treats we did. And if, you know, trunk or treats, I had the privilege of seeing Commissioner Hennessy dressed as a butterfly at one of the trunk or treats. She saw me dressed as Gru for the Minions. But, you know, these are community events because I think, you know, it's too much. We get, you know, we're just here to lock people up and put people away. And, you know, sometimes we have to do that because that's what, how the community benefits, because they do very bad things. But that's not our only role. So I'd really try and get out in the community and do for the different things, whether it be Domestic Violence Week, we have the Families Against Narcotics, Baxter Neighborhood Center. I'm always willing to go to other things. I'll throw an invitation out. We have our office Christmas party. It's an office, we have a Christmas party for CASA. So court-appointed special advocates is today at 4 o'clock at the Buffalo Wild Wings. You bring a toy. And we give it to these kids who are in foster care to give them a little bit better Christmas. And we've been doing that for years. But this is another thing of outreach that we try and help the community and do something a little bit different. So you're all welcome if you have four to six tonight at the Buffalo Wild Wings. So that's my summary. Opened any questions?
All right. Thank you, Prosecutor Becker. We appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, we have a very lengthy agenda in terms of items today. I'm gonna allow for 10 minutes of question and answer. We're gonna start the timer.
Or not. We're not doing 10 minutes either.
Or the prosecutor will, you know, so we can up to 10 minutes. Yeah, I'm gonna ask counsel to assist with that, and we'll get started. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. I only have nine minutes of comments.
All right, great. You're letting him off easy.
I just, I just wanted to express my appreciation to you and to your whole team in office. I think it's very evident with your report here this morning and also just knowing you. You could come in, just highlighting the statistics, you know, we did 1,000 cases. We won 999 of them. But that's not where your focus is. Your focus is on the people of our community and the, the challenges that are there and trying to be problem solving for, for those who perpetrate crimes in our community, help them out, help them rehabilitate, as you said, but also not losing sight of the impossible balancing act to make sure that victims are always represented. And that's an impossible job. But just thanks to you and your team for doing it so well and with such care.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaGrange?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the great report, Chris. And I also want to thank you for your very holistic, the job you do. I mean, you do not have blinders on. You see the whole community. And I didn't see a photo there of the Grand River cleanup, but I know you were there because I ran into you. What, when you talk about the appeals, what exactly is a set aside? That is a lower-level appeal?
No, a set aside, we recently, they've expanded, you know, you can get, you can expunge, expungement's probably a better way, you know, set aside a conviction is what I was talking about. So we've had expanded where it used to be, basically, if you had more than one, you couldn't get, you couldn't get anything expunged. They've now increased it. There's all kinds of, you know, I don't want to get the weeds, but basically, you know, you have three, maybe four different convictions, depending on when they happen. So we've seen a huge increase in those set-asides. And I know Commissioner Womack, we came together and I put that on our website, how to go it, because you can do it by yourself or you can do it with lawyer, a lawyer. But there's a certain procedure that you can set aside misdemeanors, felonies, whatever it may be. And that's just been a huge increase in those.
Okay, thank you. And then one other just quick technical question. The resentencings you were talking about, does that amount to another trial, like a mini trial almost?
It is a mini trial. It's not, you're not going to the guilt or innocence, but is it, do we have a right, should the person, because the Supreme Court has said, okay, life without parole, it's first degree murder is automatically life without parole. They're saying, except for juveniles and up to 20-year-olds now in Michigan, now it's, you can do it, we have a burden by a preponderance of the evidence to essentially show that they should stay in for the rest of their life. And so it is a mini trial on the sentencing aspect. So we have to get into, you know, it could be psychology, it could be their, you know, their juvenile history, how they've done. And a lot of these are because they're, it's retroactive. Now we're going into the, you know, their Michigan Department of Corrections records. And that's where, like Federico Cruz, that was the individual beheaded somebody in northern Kent County. Okay, they, he's out now because he had a pretty stellar Michigan Department of Corrections record. And so based on that, the judge released him. So some of these other ones have not had that history. And so we're gonna have to battle that out. There's a lot of battles in terms of, okay, should this individual be let out? Because they haven't had such a history and what they did in their past.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Others? Commissioner Steck?
Down to two minutes, I think. Thank you, Chair Breen. Again, thank you so much for all of the work that you and your department did in getting the domestic violence court up and going. It's probably been running now for a little more than a year. And I'm wondering, has there been a, an assessment or a report on performance and outcomes? And if not, is there going to be?
We're hoping to. We've got a contract with, I forget the name of an agency who's gonna take a look at the numbers and so forth. But the problem is that it's a year, it's a 52-week batter's intervention program. So we started, it's a little bit over a year. And that would be if they hit every single week of, you know, from when they started, and most of them don't, to be honest with you. And that's just the nature of the beast. So we're, we're hoping to have our first graduate in 61st in January and probably about the same in Catwood. So we haven't, but we've got, you know, we're almost, we're maxed out in Grand Rapids, and we've got about 15 in Catwood. So we've got the numbers. But to get those successful completions, it's, you know, it just takes at least a year.
Well, I don't want to ask you to do more work, but when they do get that report, it would be nice if you could distribute it.
Yep, definitely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Womack?
Thank you once again, Prosecutor Becker, for your service work. And we know you're going through a whole lot these last four or five years. But you were built for this job, doing a great job, picking up where Commissioner LaGrange left off. I thank you for your holistic view and the balance you have of trying to make sure that people aren't overcharged or, but at the same time, protecting our community. My question was, when you talked about some of the juveniles, because I totally understand those who have committed murder, rape, and the more severe charges, being charged as adults. I've been in the juvenile system, so I understand too the danger to other young people that are in those juvenile systems with murderers and people who have committed rape. But you mentioned that there's, sometimes when you find out, you think you've exhausted all you could do for a juvenile, they can also go to the adult system. Could you tell me, how is that evaluated? Because it's a little, left a little open?
It is open. I mean, it's not a science. It's a, it's a evaluation based on the case facts of what that individual's gone through. And, you know, quite frankly, it's up, you know, my decision. I mean, there's, you know, ultimately, that's my call in terms of have we exhausted everything? I mean, and basically, I think it is that we, have we sent them to, what program have they done? Have they been in detention? Have they been through, you know, Delta Project? They've been to Realism is Loyalty? Have they, have we sent them out of state? Very often, you know, that's the ultimate thing. If we've sent them out of state to some sort of six-month residential program, and they come back and they're still committing crimes, you kind of call my hand. I can't think of anyone that I've gone to adult court where they haven't at least gone to residential. Maybe if they kind of, you know, gone from stealing cars, all of a sudden they're, you know, some sort of assault GBH where they, you know, great bodily harm. But that may be a case. But generally, if they've been sent out of state, they're coming back and still committing crimes, that forces my hand.
Thank you very much. Last question was when it comes to juvenile records and having those sealed. Back in, should say, back in the day, doesn't look like it was so long ago. It was very hard to get information on the juvenile's criminal record. But now, with media being more aggressive at going at that, it seems to be some loopholes where a lot of information on juveniles. So has anything changed in the law as it comes to the records of juveniles?
No, those are sealed. That's, you know, if you, I get all kinds of, can you comment? Can you tell me if there's even been charges? I'm like, I'm not saying anything about juveniles. That's the third rail. I mean, I don't say whether, you know, they get more resources that they, I know they've gone to actually film court hearings before. And I think it's still in open court, which is a little bit surprising to me, just because I know juvenile records are sealed and they shouldn't be out there. But nothing's changed in the law that, you know, since I've been doing it in 30 years.
Well, thank you very much for that information, because I think it is very important that we, we do look forward to trying to protect juveniles, even at those court hearings as much as possible for their future, if they're able to rehabilitate them, help with their rehabilitation and change their lives as adults. So thank you so much. Once again, thank you for your service to the community.
Anyone else? All right. I don't see any. I'd just like to say thank you as well, Prosecutor. We, we appreciate the work you do very much. And I appreciate your willingness to tackle the hard things, to be good in your role. I think it takes a lot of dedicated hard work. And you never shy away from putting that in. And we appreciate you and the integrity you bring to the role. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Before we move to agenda item number six, I wanted to make a quick announcement. Sheriff LeJoy Young is here, and our K-9 calendars are here. We had a K-9 here, but I think the K-9 had to leave. So sorry if you missed our K-9 deputy. But Commissioners, we're trying to get a number of folks who might want one. So they're $20. If you do raise your hand, if you don't have one and want one, we can get a count. Sheriff's counting. I already have one. You got it, Sheriff? You good? Okay, they make a great gift. Members of the public, and they're adorable for our dogs on there. So thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, we'll move to agenda item number six. Public comment related only to agenda action items. If you have public comment related to an agenda action item this morning, please give us your name and address. And you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
Grand Rising, sorry, I had to find the agenda item I was trying to speak on. It's a very lengthy agenda, y'all. I was trying to speak on the, hold on, it was the refugees. I gotta find which item it is. Oh, yeah, fiscal year, Department of Labor, Economic Opportunity, Global Refugee Office. So a couple days ago, I actually just spoke on a podcast with a lady in Africa that actually builds schools in Africa. And as we have a lot of refugees, and as I was supposed to partner with Kent County to do the global welcome event, but because I had to defend myself, but I publicly had to defend myself for somebody putting their hands on me. And I just happened to upload some footage on Facebook. And so that was the reason I couldn't partner with you guys, because I defended myself. And you guys defend yourself, the police defend theyself. But when a constituent has to defend theyself and have to show people what happens when you defend yourself, then I look like a bad person. But continues what I'm saying is that I've spoke to this lady who builds schools in Africa on a decentralized streaming platform called Party. And as we know, the financial we know, the financial government and the financial banking system is broken, the Rothschild Rockefeller banker system is broken. And so as you guys get these grant funding, I hope that you guys be able to partner with me as I have been able to bring large economic boost, the largest regional finals in the entire United States of America. There's no city, there's no county, there's literally no one that done it bigger than this county and this city that we happen to live in, that you legislate on. So as you guys get the state funding to do the welcome plan and these welcome plan events, I hope that you guys consider being able to let me partner again, as you guys don't have a leader that can be as effective, and nobody could duplicate or create the energy that I've created. As Elon said, energy cannot be fake. The government can print all the cash, but you cannot fake energy. I put all of that energy out to the universe here in Kent County. Then you guys have another thing, the State Department of Labor Regional Community Collaborative Grant. So hopefully, once you guys get some funding from the state, that you guys can collab with other organizations like the Michigan High School Esports Federation that is a K through 12 nonprofit that literally pays no staffs, zero bucks and zero cents, and literally brought the largest regional finals and a profit. A nonprofit brought a profit and a huge economic impact. So you guys can legislate from the state departments as legislators, our county legislators, to continuously help our city grow. Because if you wanted to continue to be the number one city in America, leading LinkedIn, and continuously have better articles and real economic change, then you guys need to legislate and invest and ask the state departments for funding to help our county. I am the person who brought this here, an individual, I'm not an elected official, I'm just a very dedicated, passionate individual. Brittany DeVos has his own record from the CAA. I've been doing this since 2018, and I've did nothing but been authentic and genuine. I stand on business, good or bad of my actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment related to agenda items only? All right, I see none. We will move on to agenda item number seven, which is the consent agenda. I will call on Vice Chair Burl.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move today's consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions, comments, discussion on the consent agenda. I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer, Faber, Halsted, Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Morse.
Oliver King.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight. And for eight A, I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of Resolution 96 of today's date, which comes to us from the Health Department and involves the acceptance of a grant to provide additional services to the refugee community.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, discussion on this item. I see none. This is again a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 96, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer, Faber, Halsted, Hennessy, Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 96 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item eight B, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 97 of today's date, FYI, 2026, the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development Food Safety and the Home Grant.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Minority Vice Chair McLeod. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the resolution is adopted. Move to agenda item eight C, and I will call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 98 of today's date, FYI, 2024 Homeland Security Grant Acceptance.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions, comments, or discussion on this resolution? Yes, Commissioner Faber.
Thank you. I didn't hear at Finance the specifics of what we plan to really use these dollars for. In reading through the grant application, there appeared to be a variety of different things that we could spend the money on. So I'm just wondering if someone could add a little flavor to this.
Our emergency manager, Scott Corbin, is here. Scott?
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Board of Commission, Mr. Chair. Yes, for this grant acceptance, we're looking at a portion of those dollars going to our planning position. That planning position helps with deconflicting local plans, local support plans, school plans, other response plans, to include help us build out our emergency operations plan over time, multiple times that we update, update those plans. In addition, we're looking at purchasing or enhancing our EOC operations. So we're going to put some additional equipment into the EOC operations. We also have a training trailer we're purchasing for both emergency management and the Sheriff's Department Training Division, which that will be deployed as well. And then there's a laser printer that's being purchased for the city of Grand Rapids.
Okay.
Yeah. Our allocation is quite limited. We don't have very much in this, in this area, but we're trying to use it as wisely as possible.
I didn't give you a demotion, did I? I didn't get your title right. I'm sorry.
No, that's right.
All right. I know you don't care. All right. Anybody else? Questions, comments, or discussion? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. With that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 98, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer, Faber, Halsted, Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 98 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to eight D, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 99 of today's date, Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS, FY25 Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Grant to Support an Officer Wellness Program.
Well done. Anyone else? Support? Is there support? I don't know who had it first. Commissioner Steck. Questions, comments, or discussion on this one? I see none. This is again a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 99, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer, Faber, Halsted, Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 98 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to eight D, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 99 of today's date, Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS, FY25 Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Grant to Support an Officer Wellness Program.
Well done. Anyone else? Support? Is there support? I don't know who had it first. Commissioner Steck. Questions, comments, or discussion on this one? I see none. This is again a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 99, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer, Faber, Halsted, Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution Niner, Niner is adopted.
Thank you. I think I caught a Niner in there. We'll move to agenda item eight E, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 100 of today's date, be adopted, Michigan Department of Natural Resources, DTE, Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Morse. Questions, comments, or discussion on this resolution? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Green. So I find it interesting that DT Energy, who can go around the state plowing up farmland, public lands to build alternative energy, and now they've got a foundation for grants to replace trees that, I guess, that they've already destroyed.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? All right, I see none. This is a voice vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 101, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer, Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 101 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight G, and I will again call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 102, the State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Regional Community Collaborative Grant.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? See none. That, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the resolution is adopted. We move to agenda item eight H, and I will again call on, again, or is this the first time? First time, Commissioner Oliver King.
Second time.
Oh, it is the second time. You know, again, a lot to keep track of today.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move of the adoption of Resolution 103, West Michigan Welcome Plan donations.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner LeGrand. Questions, comments, or discussion on this agenda item? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the, the Welcome Plan, I, I have supported it in the past. And I, I do think that West Michigan has been a very welcoming community and should continue to be a very welcoming community. I know in, in my district, there's a small business that a couple years ago hired in an Afghan refugee with some engineering experience and doing great. And that's, that's really worked out well. And that, there's just so many examples like that. I, I've got some good friends. She came, you know, to our community many, many years ago. Her family was refugees from the USSR. And she's, she's married to a Native American man, and they're foster parents here in Kent County. And so I, I just love, you know, those stories and those kind of pictures of the welcoming community that, that we've been. I do know earlier this year, the Welcome Plan had a number of things kind of pointed out to me that were quite divisive, like political advocacy items. And I, I appreciate that those have all been pulled from the materials that the, the Welcome Plan puts out. My no vote today is just to express that my, my trust in the West Michigan Welcome Plan has not, not yet been restored, that we can truly be welcoming and not venture into divisive political topics.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Questions, comments, or discussion? All right, I see none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay?
No.
Thank you. The motion passes and the resolution is adopted. We'll move to agenda item eight I, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 104 of today's date, the Resolution of Intent to Create a Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program Pace in our Kent County.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Boujack. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item?
That wasn't Boujack.
Oh, I thought you were smiling so big, Wally, I thought it was you. It was supported by Commissioner Womack, for the record. Commissioner, Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Green. So Al, can you tell me for sure, so we set up these assessments against someone's home, and the person falls into trouble and doesn't pay it back, can the house be taken from them?
It would go through the normal, yeah, it would go through the normal process of three years, you don't pay your taxes, and the property could be taken. But it is, it's a really more of an economic development tool, primarily for commercial projects. That's where, where it's been, we have three cities and a township in Kent that have used it, and Ottawa County's used it. And I guess from my own knowledge, I'm not aware where it's been used for more than commercial yet, but it could be.
Anyone else? Commissioner LeGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say I'm, I'm happy to see this program start up. And I don't know if Representative Wooden, former county commissioner Wooden, is paying attention to this, given that he just had a new baby daughter. But it does make me think about him and his service and his dedication to getting this program off the ground. So I'm happy to see it.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I remember having some conversations with Commissioner Wooden years ago on this, this idea. It's very, very intriguing to me. And I dove deep into kind of understanding it, and I like a lot of the aspects here. I'm just curious if anyone can answer for me, the, are there, are there any constraints on, like, the, the terms of the loan? I, if I understand correctly, the, any existing lien holders on the property would have to consent to kind of being ousted from their position, you know, first, second lien or whatever, because, you know, this would, these loans would take precedence, being
But is there anything that governs beyond that, that governs, like, not doing dumb loans? Like, you know, 25% interest, or, you know, something ridiculous like that? Is there any constraint?
If you'd like to hear from me, but we also have John Wiley here from Lean and Green Michigan. He may be best able to answer that. Stepping back a minute, though, I did want to address Commissioner Ponstein's point. Just to clarify that this program really only applies to industrial, agricultural, and some multifamily dwelling units, so it wouldn't be somebody's home that would be involved in this program.
But it's something, someone's property, this one, and then we're adding another thing, and someone can lose their...
Commissioner, I think Commissioner Coleman has, we're in the middle of his question right now, so we can come back to you in a minute.
Let me bring up John, and he can answer these questions, I think.
Thanks for having me. My name's John Wiley. I'm Senior Counsel with Lean and Green Michigan. We act as the PACE Administrator around the state. So a few questions that you had. One quick one is that every project in Michigan has lender consent. So in order to close on a PACE loan, the senior lender does have to consent to it. They sign something, they're able to limit the amount of someone can borrow with PACE. They're able to limit other terms to it. So, yeah, senior lender consent is something that's required on all projects and pretty much around the country. And then your second question, so the terms, there are guidelines for terms that are set by the program and by the state. So one of those being the length is, the max is 25 years for most programs. As far as the actual interest rate goes, those are set by the market, but, I mean, obviously, these are optional loans. So a PACE lender sets, you know, gives term sheets to property owners who are interested in it. Usually, we try to get them in front of a couple of different lenders to, so they can find their best loans. I've never seen anything 25%. These are, you know, market rates set by the 10-year treasury yield. Generally, right now, they're about seven and a half percent. I didn't know if there was another question in there?
Yeah, please.
Just, yeah, a quick follow-up on that. So that is helpful to me. So the, so it's just the first lien holder that would need to consent, no subsequent lien positions would be required.
Any mortgage holder. So sometimes on very large projects, there's multiple mortgages, yeah, so we need consent from all of them.
Okay, okay. Okay, that is very helpful. And then the lenders, so the funding organizations, you're the administrator of the PACE program, if it would be countywide here, the funders are financial institutions?
Yeah, they're primarily, at this point, they're specifically set up PACE lenders that are, you know, getting money from different financial institutions, so they do all PACE loans. Now, as this has gotten more popular, some banks have gotten involved. And actually, when it originally set up, was set up, banks were a little bit involved, and then they kind of stopped, and these PACE lenders came, and now the banks are back in it. So our very first project in Michigan, Wells Fargo, was the lender on. And then they didn't really follow up too much with the PACE program. It is, it's not difficult, but it is kind of a specialty type of loan, so there's probably 10 to 15 different PACE lenders that we actively work with in Michigan. There's more, some just haven't broken into the market yet. And now, coming full circle, there are some banks and institutions that are getting back in lending, and we're actively trying to get people into lending to fill the market. As the program has progressed and as PACE has progressed around the country, there's been gaps in the market, we find, with smaller projects, with nonprofits, with certain types of loans that we want to help fill with local banks, credit unions, and national banks.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. PACE is a program that's been considered on and off, mostly, you know, behind the scenes over the years. Do we have projects that are being proposed to us at the county level? And have the local governments actually had PACE programs, and what nature are they?
Yeah, we have, I know that when we talked a year ago, there were a couple of projects that were interested. I'm not sure if there's any currently that are being proposed in Kent County.
Yep, there's definitely quite a few now. It's a little bit of a chicken or an egg thing. Like, if someone wants to use PACE, and we tell them, well, we need to still set up the program, then they might look elsewhere. But we're actively working with a couple of different projects within the city of Grand Rapids, but also outside of the city. So as someone had mentioned, there are a couple municipalities within the county that do have PACE and that we've used in the past. But obviously, you know, there are quite a few that don't have it, and there are, you know, projects that have expressed interest throughout the county, that we've let them know we are kind of in the process of working with the county to set up the program.
If I can follow up, I mean, tell me more about the nature of the projects being approved, and how they are helping on energy efficiency and that type of thing.
Yeah, absolutely. So just going back to the couple that we approved this year, a lot of, there's two types of, well, actually, there's three types of measures that people can install on their properties that are eligible. There are energy efficiency, renewable energy, or environmental hazard remediation. The majority that we see are energy efficiency. We do see some in renewable energy as well, with solar, geothermal, and wind, but the vast majority we see are energy efficiency. So they're installing things like more efficient windows, more efficient HVAC systems, higher insulation, plumbing and lighting upgrades.
If I could, one more question for the administrator. At one point, years ago, as we were talking about PACE, it was said that we would have to have an ordinance to enable it. I'm not hearing that, I'm not seeing that. It is, do we need an ordinance to?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. No.
Okay.
Commissioner Ponstein, do you have a follow-up?
Okay, we'll move to Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. So we talked a little bit at the time, and the Finance Committee reviewed this as well, that we do have jurisdictions in this county that already have PACE programs. The addition of the county participating in the PACE program leaves a little bit of overlay. Now, the individual borrower who wishes to participate, do they choose whether they want to use, if they're in the city of Grand Rapids, for example, do they choose where they want to go for the PACE program?
Yeah, it would be up to, you know, the individual. Now, we've had a similar situation in Oakland County a few years past, where we did city of Southfield, city of Troy, and then eventually the county took over. For a little while, there was overlap, and now as it's progressed, everything goes to the county. Now, if the program is still active within the individual city or township, they could still choose to use it, but that's just kind of the way that the markets progress. The big part is that keeping consistency. You know, we keep programs consistent as much as we can, but every county, every city might want to tweak things a little bit different. So if we have one program that covers a large area, there's more consistency for people working in different areas of the county.
So we shouldn't be concerned about setting up a situation where we're going to be competitively bidding with borrowers to get the program versus the city of Grand Rapids getting the program?
No, no, yeah. I don't think that would be an instance that would come up.
Thank you.
Al, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, one follow-up would be, when the county board created the Brownfield, Countywide Brownfield Authority, we had several local Brownfield authorities already in place, and so it'd be much like that. I mean, we always defer to the local unit. We don't compete with them in these cases. If it's a benefit to the project and the local unit's supportive, in the four, the four, three cities and a township that have them already, that's how that relationship would work.
And the hope is that eventually, you know, so many people want to use the program, that might be beneficial to have, you have to spread out the program a little bit. But for now, it's something that, you know, we find works really well at the county level.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Chair. Following up on Commissioner Steck's question, what are some of the distinguishing characteristics that a project would look at between, say, city of Grand Rapids versus the Kent County PACE, if they're making that decision about which municipality to go through for the PACE financing? Is, are there, I'm just trying to think through, you know, the brownfield, we have different characteristics of our brownfield than local brownfields. What are some of those for the PACE?
Yeah, no, I think that it wouldn't necessarily be the program specific. It might be every property owner I've ever worked with, when I ask them what the timeline for their project is, they say as soon as possible. So it may be something where, if we have five projects currently, you know, with the city of Grand Rapids and someone outside the city, or, let me flip that around. If we have five projects currently with the county, you know, in different areas, and someone in the city wants things done as quick as possible, it might, you'll be beneficial for them to go to the city and try to use their program, because you, the county already has five projects that we're working on, and there may be a backlog. That's not really something that's happening right now, but that could be it. Now, there are things within the statute that allow flexibility from program to program. Now, as an administrator, we try to keep those as succinct as possible, but things like the, the projects are generally limited to a maximum loan of 25% of their value. That can be adjusted upwards or downwards if a city wants to. So if the city of Grand Rapids decided they only wanted to do 20%, and the county would do 25%, that may be where a discrepancy comes up. I don't know any, off the top of my head, that there are those types of discrepancies, but it could be something that comes up.
And just one more follow-up. So as a process question, from today's action item, is there a next step that is setting some of those terms from the county perspective, or is that something that you're doing as the administrator?
Yeah, so there is a couple-part process to set up a program. This is the first one, to adopt a resolution of intent. With the adoption of resolution intent, a public hearing is set.
That's the list that's in there.
Yep, and a program report is, a draft program report is released to the public. So it's published on the website or put somewhere in person, and that has those kind of rules for the program. Then the public hearing is held, where the public can ask questions about that, and then the last item is adopting the resolution to establish.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, thank you for this briefing and answering some of our questions. When you mentioned the 7.2% loan rate, could you tell me, you mentioned a little on how that's set, and through the lifespan of this, has that flexuated any? Because we know there's a lot of developers and businesses, when we're looking even at the Fed rate of loans, that if it moves 1%, 2% forward or backward, especially when it comes down in between the 6% and 7%, we see more loans going out and a bigger interest. So could you talk about, has there been any change in that, how it's set? And because if someone's looking at that loan and thinking of looking at another conventional way of going to a loan, that percentage is going to be very, very important.
Yeah, absolutely. So just a couple of things on that. I mean, obviously, as the 10-year treasury yield changes, the interest rates change. So we saw, like many, people in real estate saw the most activity in PACE loans, or 2020, 2021, because the rates were so low. That's really advantageous for people that want to do retrofit projects to existing buildings, so that you have an existing office building, it's aging, and you're kind of trying to decide when you're going to do, you know, fix the HVAC system or do LEDs or do new windows. That's when people kind of strike on that kind of stuff. And now, as rates have gone up, those types of projects have slowed down a little bit, but the new construction projects have, you know, gone up a little bit more. And the second part of that would be, we're always trying to find ways to bring the rates down for people. A couple of ways that lenders are doing it is that they're doing standard PACE loans, but they're doing PACE loans that are, they have special programs that if you hit certain levels of efficiency, even above and beyond what's required, that they can knock the rate down a little bit, because their investors want to see those things. And then what we continue to do to try to bring in new lenders with banks, your local credit unions, local banks, as we get more lenders involved in PACE, we think that competition will bring the rates down.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? All right. I see none. With that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 104, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 104 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 8J, and I will call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 105, the 2026 Management Pay Plan Range and Wage Changes.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, discussion on this item? All right. I see none. With that, this is, again, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 105, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 105 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 8K, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Third time is a charm.
That's right.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move that Resolution 106, CIP Transfer to the Fuller Campus Clinic Modification Program be adopted.
Is there support? Supported by Vice Chair Burrell. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is another roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 106, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod, or Minority Vice Chair McLeod. Try something new today.
Yes.
Commissioners Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. Motion passes. Resolution 106 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 8L, and I will call on Vice Chair Burrell.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move Resolution 107 of today's date, Resolution granting county administrator authority to sign sublease agreement with the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Minority Vice Chair McLeod. Can you give a brief, just overview on this one, Al? That, I know that this didn't go through a committee and came from counsel's office to the chair, or whoever. So just a quick one would be good for the board.
We have a longstanding sublease with the state of Michigan for our Human Services Building, and the state recently requested just an updated resolution. Different things happen out at the building from time to time with little minor adjustments, which are normally covered by our boilerplate in resolutions, but the state asked for an updated resolution, giving our administrator the ability to sign those documents. But as a basic premise, there's not a lot changing out there. It's just a renewal.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Okay, I see none. That, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. The motion passes and the resolution is adopted. Move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public comment related to general county matters. Is anybody with public comment related to general county matters? Please come up and give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes.
How y'all doing? D. Jones, future billionaire, trillionaire. I know that seems unrealistic to some people, that somebody could say they could be a trillionaire, but I believe I honestly can do it. I brought the largest regional finals in the number-one city for, that's growing, by LinkedIn. I have 24,000 people on LinkedIn. I think my LinkedIn will get bigger and bigger and bigger. As I already spoke at the United Nations, and I spoke to people in Africa about decentralized finance, and the Rothschild, Rockefeller, enslaving people all across the globe with their banking system and bankers. I'm very conscious, I know these things, and I'm one of those people that'll speak out. I'm not going to hold my tongue, because I know people, even our county government, even you guys, your communities, those rural areas, those countries, you know, I'm a, I'm in a fraternity. A lot of my fraternity brothers are country boys, and they were really good friends. And I know even those communities struggles too. So I'm not just a, you know, just a black guy. I'm Haitian too. I'm French. The city of Chicago was created by a French person. I know I have a unique purpose on this universe. I brought the largest regional finals to the poorest city in America for African-Americans, and I also helped the school district build seven esports labs. I helped KDL invest hundreds of thousands in infrastructure, and that same library system was there at the regional finals at the DeVos Place and invested and brought PCs so students all across the state, the United States, to compete at the DeVos Place, the DeVoses, the DeVoses. I did that, a black person, an African-American, in the poorest city in America. That's historic, and I am a historian. I'm a black person that's been nothing but genuine and authentic with every single one of y'all, with my friends, with the community, every single person. I'm D. Jones, every single, that's why I stream, so people know I'm the same person in real life as I am in person, on a decentralized platform. And also, I got the tokenomics for that decentralized cryptocurrency, the party token, which you actually can stream and earn cryptocurrency. I think the government should start doing that, so then you can start just using the profits and being transparent and start utilizing it to actually fix the community up. But I'm going to continue to do that, as I have the tokenomics for this cryptocurrency, and the headquarters is in Dubai. And I also gave David LeGrand, the entire board, the 3D-printed business plan, because I actually have a full feasible business plan I gave to the city government, as they're going to be adopting the 3D printing. And then I also have the cool thing, so the, I brought Epic Games here in the spring, $32 billion company, and people don't know what the Unreal Engine, not only can you develop video games, but you can develop visuals and renderings for houses. So as I have this cryptocurrency that's going to integrate 3D printing and construction finance, I'm going to be a billionaire, trillionaire, because you guys hear that, I've spoken to United Nations 3D printing, and it's like some Larry Fink stuff. I'm finna get up out of here, but I'm going to be a billionaire, trillionaire one day. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment related to general county matters? Good morning. Good morning. Please give us your name and address. You have up to three minutes.
Uh, my name is Charles Snedeker. I'm a lifelong resident of Kent County. I'm here today regarding the detention of my neighbors at the Kent County Jail for ICE pickup and subsequent detention. These neighbors had posted bail and should have been released. Instead, they were held for ICE detainment and then processed into detention centers. The Sheriff's Department was established to protect our community. They are a local agency funded by local re- revenue. They are not a federal agency in charge of federal immigration enforcement. Why are our county's resources being used to detain our community members? How can you approve of this perversion of Kent County's premise, your partner, your place, which was meant to reflect a place of home and reflect an aspirational statement regarding what Kent County strives to be? And this vis-, is this vision just only for us white people, or does this include everyone in our community? You must stop any collaborations and unjust, unwarranted detentions and abductions which tear apart families. Instead, you must insist the welfare of our neighbors is your primary concern. Therefore, tell the sheriff of Kent County that there shall be no unjust detentions or any agreements with ICE. And now that you know this truth, Kent County facilities are another gateway for ICE abductions. This is in your jurisdiction. ICE is operational and using Kent County resources to kidnap and detain without due process. You are held accountable. And also, because you know the truth, you are now responsible for each and every mother and father detained without proper warrants in your backyard and your facilities. You are now complicit. You are guilty. You are currently no different than the masked thugs that roam our streets, terrorizing our schools, our schoolyards, and our neighborhoods. But yet, you are our legislators. You have the power and the authority to make changes. So please, stop any county collaboration with ICE today. And remember the prayer that we are offered this morning, charity for all we serve. May that prayer rest in your hearts. Charity for all we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning.
Hi, I, my name is Teresa Lewis, and I've lived in Kent County for a long time. My concern is we need our county sheriff, Sheriff Young, to clarify what policy is currently being used when ICE places individuals into the Kent County Jail. And what happens when ICE tries to remove them. It appears that the sheriff's policy has recently changed from what was stated in 2019, when the sheriff's office announced they would not turn people over to ICE without a warrant signed by a judge. But it seems that everything is changing. Recently, we've noticed that the sheriff's office is detaining people for up to 48 hours when they receive an I-247 document, which is simply a detention order, not a warrant signed by a judge. For example, a few days ago, a few weeks now, a Guatemalan man was detained by the local police and taken to Kent County Jail. Then the ICE office sent an I-247 form, which is not a court order, and when the family went to pay the bail so he could be released, they were told that he could not be released until 48 hours had passed. When the family member who was informed asked why, the person in charge of receiving the bail money told him he was just following orders and had to wait to consult with a higher authority. Several hours later, ICE agents arrived and took the man to North Lake Prison for his almost certain deportation. The next day, when members of the Grand Rapids Rapid Response and Cosetia Group showed up to request the man's release and speak directly with the sheriff to clarify what the real policies of her office is, she was supposedly unavailable, nor did anyone give a clear answer as to why they handed the Guatemalan immigrant over to the ICE if there was no warrant. We are demanding answers and transparencies. We understand that the Sheriff's Department has changed its policy to cooperate with ICE, but without formally explaining why and how they changed the policy regarding the detention of individuals for up to 48 hours, even when their bail has been paid. It is important that if the sheriff wants us to trust her and her office, she must clearly and formally explain what her office current, office's current policy is, and whether they changed it because they, because they did not do so publicly. What is the policy for the detention and subsequent transfer of residents of Kent County to ICE? We are asking the Kent County Commissioners for answers, because the sheriff won't tell us publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Hickox, and I've been a Kent County resident since 1996. And I'm here as a very, very concerned citizen, seeing and witnessing firsthand some atrocities that are occurring. And I was listening to the invocation this morning, which I greatly appreciated. But again, it said concern, concerning care for our community, the whole entire community. These are the things that we're requesting, or that I'm feeling strongly about. Kent County needs to wash their hands of the cruelty of ICE. Kent County must not be complicit with the unlawful detention of its community members. Kent County cannot be a part of nor endorse the discriminatory, discriminatory policies of ICE. Kent County must strive to provide its community with all of the rights and guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. Therefore, I present this Board of Commissioners, who have been elected to represent the people of this community, with the following proposals. I strongly urge you to adopt policies restricting the ability of state and local police to make arrests for federal immigration violations or to detain individuals on civil immigration warrants. Policies restricting the police or other county workers from asking about immigration status. Policies prohibiting 287G agreements through which ICE deputizes local law enforcement officers to enforce federal immigration law. Policies that prevent local governments from entering into a contract with the federal government to hold immigrants in detention. Policies preventing immigration detention centers from being established in Kent County, which would include the use of the Kent County Jail as a detention facility for ICE. A policy that will not allow the Kent County Sheriff's Department to share flock camera images or any other information gathered by county staff with ICE or any other law enforcement agency seeking to arrest, detain, and deport immigrants. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning.
I'm Tim Baker. I'm from Byron Township Assessing. I'm, because you're, you don't have a meeting on the 18th, I am kind of accelerating this. I'm still in talks with, um, the equalization director. This is a time where we, um, negotiate, um, so we can equalize our, our, our ratio, um, with the, um, equalization. It's an important year for us, because we're also going to be audited by the, the state to make sure all our numbers are lining up. And, uh, I'd like to just formally, and, and I'll perfect that if we don't come to any agreement, uh, through the, um, written process, but I'd like to formally appeal, um, the preliminary equalizations study ratios that were given to us. It looks like we're down to now about, um, the commercial, um, ratio. The ratio is, and why I'm bringing it to you guys, you're like the board of review that we have locally. So if somebody would peel their taxes, they come to the board of review. If I have a problem with the equalization numbers, I come to you, and then we go to court, which gets expensive. So, the, the number that she gave me, um, this Megan, um, the equalization director, is 44.57. I did my study, same exact, um, study. I came up with 46.4. That's a big difference. She also gave me her, her study, which looked at sales. I compared it to not only our assessment, but other assessors. So this study is flawed, because she simply, um, took a sale in another community, which is what I did, and then I adjusted it for, for our particular subject property, and, and, and then went ahead and made that my appraisal value. She didn't do that. She just used the assessment that the other community had. And if you look at that ratio, which she got done with that study, it was 37.7. So based on those flaws, I'm, I'm going to be formally appealing. But I think that what typically happens is we kind of go back and forth, and we come to an agreement. And I, I surmise that's what's going to happen this time, but if not, we'll formally appeal. I don't know how you're going to deal with it, because you don't meet in December, but the deadline is, is once, um, I appeal it, she has to give you that report this month, and then, um, she has to give it to the state. Once it goes to the state, it's cement, and so now it gets really difficult. So there's a real crunch, and that's why I'm coming to you to now, now, just to kind of explain it all, and let you know what's going on, so if you see it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you. We'll be in touch, Mr. Baker. All right, we will move to Agenda Item, I'm sorry, is there anybody else for public comment this morning related to general county matters? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 10, which is the Administrator's Report.
Yes, uh, two items today. Uh, please, I hope you will, uh, read the Administrator Board Office Annual Report. Uh, that's part of your agenda. And then also, I just wanted to call out Paula Eglin. Paula, wave, all right. Paula is our new engagement manager for Kent County. Uh, we'll be having, uh, an open house to properly, uh, welcome her in January. But, yeah, get to know Paula. She's, uh, already hit the ground running and, and developing a pretty robust agenda for engagement, so.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Paula. All right, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 11, which is reports. I have one. Um, we have, uh, received and filed the annual report from the Administrator's Office. Uh, I believe that is in your board packet. Please, uh, take some time to review and, uh, bring any feedback to, uh, Al and the team. Uh, any other reports this morning from Commissioners? All right, I see none. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 12, which is miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous items from Commissioners this morning? Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. At the risk of stealing the thunder from our chair, who probably was watching this as well.
It's your district.
It's my, I, yeah. But, um, the West Catholic team won the Division V championship Sunday at Ford Field, playing against the defending champion Notre Dame Prep out of Oakland County. It was a 42 to 14, very divisive, divisive, decisive, let's call it divisive, it's decisive, decisive win. And, um, so we remain very proud of the work that is put into it by the youth who play football and of the band that supports them at every step along the way and supports, um, our community at many places along the road as well. So congratulations to West Catholic.
Thank you. Congrats to Coach Grove and everyone that went into that. Uh, Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Um, from the Boujack family of Alaska, Michigan, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a Happy New Year, and hope the New Year finds you all healthy, wealthy, and wise. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you next year.
Thank you. Uh, others? Commissioner Womack.
Just want to say happy holidays to everybody. Definitely want to put a special thanks in to our minority chair, Michelle McLeod, for her service, uh, this year, again, as our minority vice chair, and, uh, just showing us, um, a fine example of working through transitions and pressure and all the things that we go through in life. And she just did a wonderful job, and I'll be admis, not to give her that credit today publicly, just, I'm just so, so very proud to, to work with her. Also want to say, uh, as I mentioned, happy holidays. We had a Thanksgiving turkey giveaway with the chief of police, and, um, he was well-received in our community for his fighting of crime. And, um, there were a few questions, wasn't all rosy, but majority just so, so supportive of, of his work in the community. And, and I'm telling the story because we had to tell our own story in the third war. As the chief partnered with us to give away turkeys, the media covered it. And even though they interviewed us all in the same place, they, um, ended up chopping it up as if it was two different places. And when they mentioned people who were part of the turkey giveaway, it was our community and mentors. But it wasn't the chief, mentors, community, people. So it, sometimes there's situations in our community where we have to call the police to task. And, and as, uh, Prosecutor Becker said, that makes it to CNN and all over the world. But locally, I just think it's good to let people know that it's, it's, it's a lot of good things going on in the community, a lot of collaborations that set a great example for our children, that law enforcement is something that we, uh, really admire. People that go in that profession, and that we want more people in our community to go in that profession. We understand the importance of us, uh, showing those good sides of law enforcement and us working together. So thank you very much, and happy holidays once again to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else for miscellaneous this morning? All right, I see none. Um, I would like to, uh, join the Commissioners who said so in wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy holidays. Uh, I will say that we have no intention to meet as a group prior to January 8th. Uh, it would have to take some kind of a very emergent issue that would come up, and I don't see that right now, but we'll knock on wood. So, um, we'll plan to, uh, see everyone, uh, in the new year and enjoy the holidays with your family. Uh, we'll move to Item 13, adjournment. I'll call on Vice Chair Burrell. Chair Burrell.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, January 8th, 2026, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. Um, also, I forgot to mention, uh, Health Department Clinic Renovations Ribbon Cutting, 11 o'clock at the Fuller Campus, if you'd like to attend. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. We are adjourned.